I would like to reconvene the meeting from closed session and call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of February 2nd, 2021. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. City Attorney, Mr. Watson, could you please give us the closed session report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The closed session report was that no action was taken and it will continue after the close of business.
Thank you. And I really want to apologize to everyone that was out there watching and let them know that we were in closed session and so we didn't start on time and that was my fault. So, thank you. As there are no proclamations this evening, the first item on our agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Staff received one written communication for public comment from Jonathan Hawes expressing concerns about the City of El Monte's Promise Foundation Scholarship Fund. And I don't see any hands raised for public comment at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So that moves us on. Mr. Stillwell, any comments you want to make? Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for a City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Madam Mayor, if there's no items, I would like to adopt the consent calendar as submitted.
Okay, anyone?
A second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. And any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have an appointment. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title and give the staff report?
The City Council will consider appointing one City Council member to the Investment Oversight Committee. Madam Mayor, members of the council, as I mentioned, the request this evening is to appoint one City Council member to the Investment Oversight Committee. Mayor Patino is to make the appointment with ratification by the City Council.
So I have a, I'll make a motion to appoint Councilmember Waterfield to the Investment Oversight Committee. Would anyone like to second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Oops, excuse me. "The City Council Will Receive a Cost of Service Study, User Fee Study, and the Preliminary User Fee Cost Recovery Level Policy and Request the City Council to Bring Any Changes or Comments Forward at a Virtual Public Workshop Organized by the Department of Finance."
And introductions are to be made by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. On February 14th of 2020, the Santa Maria, at the Santa Maria Inn, the City Council held its biannual goal-setting session. The council agreed the overarching principle would be, and continue to be, maintain financial health, a balanced budget, strong reserves, and address rising pension costs. The council also agreed on five citywide goals that were included in the adopted budget. The council discussed at the workshop the need to have a fiscally constrained budget due to previously known rising costs, as well as the quick adjustment required to address the economic impacts resulting from the COVID shutdown. So in adopting the budget, the City Council adopted three policy priorities: to balance the budget, utilize a hiring freeze, and fund existing commitments before expanding service. So the first policy of balancing the budget is easier said than done. Yes, the city is required legally to have a balanced budget and has always had a legally adopted balanced budget, where total sources, total funding available equals or exceeds total expenditures anticipated. This year, however, the revenue was not projected to be sufficient to meet the anticipated expenditures. And so in order to adopt a legally balanced budget, the City Council was required to draw from its emergency reserve funds. However, as described in the adopted budget, the reserves, the reserve has limits and the city will quickly need to pivot to another strategy to maintain the balanced budget. And that strategy entails raising revenue, cutting services, and reducing costs. So one of the approaches in the adopted budget was to examine the city's fee structure and costs of providing services. This analysis is important for the City Council and its residents and customers to understand what it costs to provide the services to the, that the city provides, what it costs to provide the services the city provides. And also with this information, the City Council is then able to set a policy who should pay for the services the city provides. Some services should be paid by every taxpayer, some should only be paid by the people who use that service. Most costs of services are split between someone who pays for part of it through fees and part of it is paid by all the taxpayers. So this is the analysis we'll look at today. Tonight is an opportunity to see the analysis that's been completed and begin thinking about the economics of who pays for the services the city provides. Someone pays for all the city, all the services the city provides, and the council must decide the fair balance between who pays for what. One caution, though, is that the more the taxpayers pay for services that someone pays a fee for, the less taxpayer money is available for those services that everyone uses, which in Santa Maria is primarily public safety. And so, as the mayor mentioned, we're not asking for a final action tonight. The Finance Department did lead this effort, and Finance Director Mary Harvey is here to describe the process and introduce the team who conducted the analysis presented tonight.
Ms. Housel?
Oh, Harvey?
Did you say Housel?
Ms. Harvey.
Harvey.
No, I know that. I thought you, and I was just thinking, I'm sorry, I thought you said Housel.
I thought you said Harvey.
You did, okay. Ms. Harvey.
Good evening, City Council, staff, and public. Tonight, staff is requesting that City Council receive the Cost of Services Study and the Preliminary Use Fee Cost Recovery Level Policy, as well as provide direction to staff to hold a virtual public workshop February 23rd, 2021, at 1:30 p.m. to discuss these documents for polling. Last year, during the City Council's goal-setting exercise and during the 2022 budget cycle, City Council asked staff to see how the city might increase revenues and determine how, who should be paying for services the city provides. Conducting a comprehensive Cost of Services Study, commonly referred to as a user fee study, is the first step in determining which services are paid by taxpayers and which are paid by those directly receiving a service, and then determining whether any fees can be increased. The last time a user fee study was conducted was in 2005. Since then, except for this past July, fees have been updated annually by CPI. Of course, in the meantime, there have been a number of new requirements placed on us in how we provide services that have added time and cost, and many of our expenditures, such as healthcare costs, have increased more than the annual CPI increases. The result of this is that there are many services the city provides that are now disproportionately funded by tax dollars, where the intent of the City Council had been to have the tax dollars used for the general benefit of the community and fee revenue charged to those who choose to have a specific service. The city continually works hard to keep costs low. However, there are still costs of providing all city services. The question then is, what is the proportion of who pays for these costs? The taxpayer or the person benefiting from the service? Just over a year ago, the city selected Revenue and Cost Specialists to conduct a comprehensive user fee study. Tonight, Eric Johnson, President, and Chu Tai, Vice President of Revenue and Cost Specialists, are here to present an overview of the user fee study, introduce the draft policy, and explain the purpose of having a public workshop. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Johnson for his presentation.
Thank you.
Oops. Are you there?
Mr. Johnson, can you hear me okay?
There we go. All right. Thank you, Mary. Good evening, Mayor Patino, members of the council. I am Eric Johnson. I'm here also tonight with Chu Tai. We're happy to be here tonight to present the results of the Cost of Services Study. Before we get started, I'd like to give you a little background on Revenue and Cost Specialists. There we go. All right. So we're a company that started in 1980 with former City Manager and former Finance Director, and they really pioneered the concept of matching fee revenue with the cost of the service. That came out of Proposition 13 and Proposition 4 that I'll talk about more in a moment. Over the last 40-plus years now, we've studied over 250 different agencies in five different states. I myself have been doing this for 31 years now, and I've done this with over 100 different agencies. And Chu has been doing this for 23 years. That's a Budget Manager, Finance Director, and the last number of years has doing fee studies with us. So what have we done? We've recast the city budget with a business orientation. We did this because the voters told us to. In 1978, they passed Proposition 13, which limited property taxes, as we all know. Then a year later, they passed Proposition 4, which said that fees that do not exceed the cost reasonably borne of providing the service are not considered taxes. They wanted government to act more like a business and know its cost. But while governmental accounting does a great job of tracking revenues and expenses at the firm, department, and division level, it was never really designed to track revenues and costs at a service level. So we had to create that information. Working with staff, we identified what a cost to provide the full business cost of services to your customers. So there is no City Council service or City Manager service. These costs, amongst others, are part of the overhead support cost. It's just like when you go to the store and you buy a can of corn. You know that the cost of that can includes the farmer, and the canners, and the distributors, and the truck drivers, and the checker, of course, at the grocery store. You know that. Well, we have done that same thing here with the city services. We have identified the full business cost of providing services to your customers. As a business, you will not stay in business very long if you don't know this information. Additionally, you will not stay in business very long if you are not able to match up revenues with those costs. So we have done this also. For every fee service, we have identified the revenue and matched that up with the cost of providing that service. So how did we do this? As I mentioned, this information doesn't exist, doesn't exist until we had done this process working with staff. So we sat down with the departments and identified, what are the services that you're providing? Let's take a look at all the potential services that you could charge a fee for. And over the course of that process, we kind of winnowed that down to take a look at things that we felt very comfortable, these are personal choice services, these are services that you could charge a fee for. We identified how much time is spent on that and by whom, and went over that process and over that process and over that process with staff until we all felt comfortable with that information. We reviewed the budget. We calculated overhead rates through a cost allocation plan, a very detailed overhead calculation. And we developed fully allocated hourly rates for every position in the city. So salaries, benefits, operating expenses, city overhead, department overhead, sometimes division overhead, to come up with a base of billing rate, a business billing rate for every position. We reviewed the services to categorize between community-supported services and personal choice services, which I'll talk about more in a second. And then we sat down and I said, here's the cost, here's the current fee, and what would the, what would the new fee be if we wanted 100% cost recovery? In most cases, we recommended in this report here 100% cost recovery for the various services, and we made fee recommendations for those various services. Now, what do I mean by community-supported and personal choice services? Community-supported tax, which we also call tax services, typically benefits the community as a whole. It's 100% supported by tax dollars and can only be supported by tax dollars, things such as police and fire and street maintenance. Those things that when people say, what do my tax dollars pay for? This is what their tax dollars pay for. And then there's personal choice services, also called fee services. The customer is identifiable, the service is measurable. Most importantly, it benefits an individual or a group and not the broader community. You can still subsidize it based on social safety, welfare reasons, or whatever reasons you as a council decide. Examples of this are development services, which are typically not subsidized, and recreation services, which typically are. But they're both personal choice services that charge, that fees are charged. Now, I'm kind of a picture guy myself, and so another way to look at what I just said is, the top left circle, taxes and grants are meant to support community-supported services. Fees, by Proposition 4, are meant to support personal choice services. But to the extent that the fees don't cover the cost of the service, taxes have to pay for that. There's no other place, there's no other pot of money to draw from other than taxes. So if the, if the fee does not cover that cost, that cost by default is coming from your tax dollars. Through this process, we identified almost $11 million in subsidies to personal choice services. These costs are occurring. The question now is, who's going to pay for these services? The person receiving the service or the taxpayer? These are your only options. And if the taxpayer is going to pay for it, then there is less money for community-supported services that only taxes can pay for, such as police, fire, parks, and streets. If the person or group benefiting from the service pays for that service, then there is more money available from community-supported services. You can't spend a dollar more than once. Now, there's that big $11 million number there, and that's a really big number. But if we look at the detail a little bit more, you'll see, we're not, we're not suggesting that the city, if they adopted all the recommendations in this report, could recover $11 million. But we are saying, if the city adopts all the recommendations in this report, that it could recover almost $3.4 million per year, every year. And so let's dive into that a little bit. Community development services, planning, building, engineering services, that's pretty much 100% cost recovery. When you get into public safety, we see a $1.2 million subsidy number there, but possibly a revenue of only $645,000. Big reason for that are code enforcement inspections you charge a fee for, but you don't get a lot of revenue. False alarm responses, both police and fire, there's a fee there, but you're not really getting a lot of revenue. The point of those services is not necessarily revenue generation, but compliance. So we're not suggesting that even though those costs are there, that the city will recover that revenue. Leisure and cultural, recreation, community services, there's a big $6.6 million number there, and we're not, we're not recommending any revenue changes. There, hopefully, will be a whole larger discussion about how much recreation should be subsidized that you and the community need to have. But what we've identified in here is how much the various recreation services are costing, and some suggestions about how to move forward to set up some subsidy policy. Maintenance and enterprise services, solid waste water, wastewater services, that's pretty much 100% cost recovery. As a side note, of course, these are in separate funds, utility funds, enterprise funds, and any new revenue would go to those enterprise funds and help offset what the ratepayers are making up for. So instead of the taxpayer making it up for on the general fund side, the ratepayer is making it for it today on the, on the enterprise fund side. And then administration, there's a difference between that $1.2 million number and the almost $900,000 number. And that's mostly because with the delinquent water turnoffs, there are some state limitations on how much you can charge for delinquent reconnections. So that's why the difference there. So that's why there's a difference between the $11 million subsidy number and the $3.4 million possible new revenue number. And it's that $3.4 million number that we think going forward is, is conservatively So the project goal was to identify the full cost of the various services, which we've done. RCS and city staff have made fee recommendations for every service that we feel makes sense, that we feel makes sense to present to you as an option. It's now up to the council to decide which services should be charged the full cost and which services should be subsidized with tax dollars. Because this is really about tax subsidy policy. Which services are important enough to the broader community to be supported with tax dollars, and which services are really benefiting individuals and should be borne by them? The services are being provided, the costs are occurring, the question now is, who is going to pay for it? Therefore, we propose a user fee cost recovery policy. And goals of this policy would be to develop policy to define subsidy levels for broad categories of fees, to define, to define for the public why certain fee categories are subsidized while others are not, and to provide guidance to staff on new user fees in the future. And there is a draft policy. Now, this policy is a draft that will be refined during the workshop based on feedback from the, from the council. So as was mentioned, that public workshop is on Tuesday, February 23rd, from 1:30 to 5:00. And we'll get into all the detail then and all the fun there. And with that detailed review of those proposed fees and then the cost and any and all questions you have. Approval of any changes to the fee would be based on feedback from that workshop and would happen at a separate meeting with a separate public hearing notification. I'd like to quickly walk you through how to read the report, just because the, the kind of, you know, obviously we'll have any questions, general questions you may have here tonight. But the next step is to kind of throw back to you guys for the next couple of weeks where you spend some time going through and generating questions or concerns, and so that we're ready for the workshop, workshop session. And so the report is laid out, there's kind of text and supporting appendices after that. And, you know, it's almost 600 pages, but the first 30 pages or so are explanatory text, kind of background of what we did, how we did it, some broad numbers. When we get into Chapter 4, on page 31 of the PDF, that's where it gets into kind of the initial results. And so you'll see, we've broken it into community development and public safety and leisure and culture, maintenance and enterprise, administrative services, these kind of five blocks of common services. And each block will have its, a summary schedule, which will list the service, what's the total fee revenue based on the fees today, that service cost, and then how much it's being subsidized, if it's a negative number, or in some cases, how much it's being overcharged if it's a positive number. Because of course, if we're saying the fee is currently more than the cost, we need to lower the fee. You now have an obligation to lower that fee because now you know that it's more than the cost. And then off to the far right there, possible new revenue. And so the important thing is, on that far left column, there's a reference number. You need to follow through the report.
Eric, did you have other slides? Because you're referencing things that we're not seeing on the screen, so I just wanted to verify that.
I did not know that. I did not have other slides. I'm hoping to be able to, I was hoping to be able to show them the PDF of the report, but I can describe it. And so there's that Chapter 4 that starts on page 31. After that, there's an-
Are you showing the PDF?
I am showing it on my screen.
Oh, you're not sharing it, and then I didn't get that. Okay.
And still can't see it?
No.
Yeah, I'm going to do a new, oh, here we go. Let's try this. How's that?
I can see that, and then I'm going to have to try to pull it over. Can you, do you have a second to email it to me real quick? I don't think that, in a way, it's, it's out on our website.
It did, yeah, and it's not important. I can, I just kind of walked through with the council, describe it. This will just help the council as they're going through and looking at the report after the meeting tonight, that the first, you know, there's about 45, 50 pages of text at the beginning. And I would strongly recommend going through that text and give you a good overview and the summary results. After that, in Appendix A, you'll see for all the 245 services that we identified, what the current fee is, and next to that, what the proposed fee is.
Okay.
And that's about 40 pages. And after that will be the detail for each of those S numbers. And so that's where the S number is important. So if you, if you're curious, why is S001 being subsidized to the tune of $30,000 a year? Or if you're, if you're curious why S001's fee is going up so much, you can go to Appendix B, which has for every service, two matching pages. And so it'll be a description of the service, what the current fee is, what the proposed fee is. And most importantly, there'll be a second page, which will show the cost detail and the time detail. So you can see how, which positions are involved in providing that service, and how much time they're spending on each of the various services. So hopefully, it allows you to, to kind of dive into the detail to answer any questions or concerns you might have. And of course, we'll, we'll probably bring up other questions and concerns, they should get into that, that we can certainly, we will certainly talk about at the workshop.
Yeah. I think, I'm going to go ahead, if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing your screen and put that up for the council, because they're not seeing what you're referring to. So I just pulled it up from the webpage, and I'm going to try to share my screen with the council so that they could, hopefully, you could walk them through the pages that they're looking at, just one moment.
All right. So if you go to page 33 of the PDF-
Okay, give me one second, please.
Mm-hmm.
Rhonda, while you pull that, pull that up, can I ask him a question?
Yeah, I'm-
I'm looking at-
Absolutely.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the chart. And so can you just clarify, the total fee revenue, that's how much we're currently charging, correct?
Correct. That's based on the current fees, correct?
Okay. And the recovery fees, the actual is how much we're actually spending now, and the suggested is what we should change, correct?
Right. So the, when you're looking at that percentage columns, the actual is what, based on the current fees, and the, yeah, the suggested is what we're recommending the cost recovery be for that service.
Got it. Thank you.
While, while we're waiting, was there any, any, are there any general questions about anything I've said so far?
Yeah, I think if you could reiterate what Councilmember Soto was just, maybe walk us through that chart again. And so it's on, was that the chart on page 36, the table 2?
33.
Or is it 33, the table 1?
Yeah, both of them have the same format. So, so for instance, column, column 3 there, total fee revenue, is, is based on what the revenues are today, based on the current fees today. So if it has zero revenue, that most, most likely means there is no current fee. Column 4 is the total cost, again, today, based on the, the cost we calculated. And this is the, the detail that is later in Appendix B, so you can see what makes up the cost for each of those S numbers. But it is the fully burdened cost. So when you look at that cost, remember when I was talking about the fully allocated hourly rate, salaries, benefits, operating expenses, and the various overheads? These costs represent that full business cost with all those overhead costs added Column 5, the total profit subsidy, is just the subtraction of the columns 3 and 4. So again, if it's a negative number, that means it's currently being subsidized with tax dollars. If it's a positive number, that means the fee is, is charging more than the cost, and the fee will need to be reduced.
So-
Again, column 6 is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm looking at S008, all the way down to S013, which we do not take any revenues for certain items as downtown permit minor- for certain items as downtown permit, minor, major, with site development, and you're suggesting that we should charge a cost for these items?
That is correct. Right, and so yes, there has been a policy up to this point to not charge for those services, and so I'm just presenting that back to you and seeing if the council wants to continue that policy, or if it wants to institute a fee at any point up to 100% cost recovery.
That was on page 33, it's, I'm looking at S to the left, the reference number S008 to S013, where it shows in the revenue fee column, there's, we don't take any income for that, but then the suggested service cost.
Question.
Go ahead, Carlos.
Thank you, Mayor. Question in regards to that area, what does admin downtown minor means?
And this is where you'll go to Appendix B, because Appendix B has all of that detail. And so if you guys have the PDF there in front of you, and you go to page 110 of the PDF, you'll be able to see a description of that service as to what exactly that means.
So the table on page 33, that had admin downtown permit, minor, and all those six others, so if you go to Table B or Appendix B, then for that particular one, as Eric said, on page 110-
110.
It says it's in, it has the same reference number, it says it's in planning, it's an application, and it's for the administrative planning review of events, minor exterior improvements, and minor modifications. Then it says the current fee structure, and as that first table shows, it's zero. And then they do an analysis of what the unit cost is, and it's $175 to process one of those permits. We charge zero, so the whole cost of that comes from the general fund, and there's a total of 178 of those. And remind me again, Eric, those are actual from the past or estimated?
Those, it's a combination of both, so it's mostly historical, but you know, as we all know, 2020 was an unusual year, so we're trying to look backwards and also look forward.
Jason, what pages?
Yeah, so on that particular one, page 110.
110.
Yeah. 110.
But they're all kind of set out like that, so you can look at that overall table, find the number, and then go back and get the details of what it is.
I don't think it's linked.
Maybe, I use the find thing option, so you can put the Table A, and it's Ctrl+F.
It doesn't appear that we're able to get that up on the screen.
Okay, but as was just explained, each of these services has this matching page, which has that description of what that service is, the current fee structure, and the proposed fee structure to recover the cost. And for those of you who do have it up on your own screens, page 111 has that cost detail for that service, so you can say, well, why is it $175? You can go to the next page and see that we identified it takes a project planner about an hour to process one of these, and these are typical times, so we're looking at the time it takes most of the time to process a service. So we're not looking at the very easiest one, and we're not looking at the very hardest one, the ones that kind of go sideways, but what, how much time do most of them take? And that's where you have that time of an hour, and fully burdened, the hourly rate of a project planner is $175 an hour. And so that's how we came up with the cost, and that's how we came up with the fee.
I find it interesting, only because coming from a self-employed family, you get a job description, and under that job description, you have A, B, C, and D, and I would think that would be part of a project planner's job description, but yet we're gonna charge the public $175 to do something that was under their job description. That's what we're gonna have to discuss when we go through this study session. It's hard, you've got private sector and government sector, and they're both completely different with their jobs descriptions, so it's-
Yes, Ms. Soto?
Yes, I have a question, and I think it goes back to the forum, the public forum that's going to take place. I see that it's from 1:30 to 5:00, and those are typically working hours, and so I can see how certain members of the public would be excluded from this conversation, so my question is, are you planning on having this forum, like, after work hours, before this comes back to the council again, or what other methods you're considering to ensure that the public can have access to this forum and be able to provide input?
Eric, I can take that question, I think. Thank you for the question. We did consider doing more than one workshop, and that is a possibility, however, we were trying to find a time that would work, and so we chose this time to do that. We definitely will be noticing the public that it will be happening, so we will do what we can to allow other comments to come in so that their input is heard, and if needed, we can do a second one, we would just have to find that time, and we would need that direction from council.
You know, it might be interesting to do two workshops on this, because I think the first is gonna generate a lot more interest and a lot more questions that we would, you know, pick up in the second one, at probably a different time. Thank you, Ms. Soto.
Madam Mayor-
Yes, Mr. Silwell?
So there was a question yesterday that a council member brought up as well, that, so, two points. One is a question yesterday, a council member brought up about, for example, the fire department. There was one example that we were looking at of the fire alarm monitor cost, and it shows that it is $154, our fee is $53. Actually, wait, I'm sorry, our fee is $53, the total cost is $271.
What page are you on, Jason?
So that one is on page 310.
310?
Yeah. And so the question was, how can it be $273? And so it shows here on the, on page 311, the following page, that it takes a fire prevention officer or inspector about one and three-quarters hours to do the inspection, and to be able to process the work. So it's a look at not just the time doing the work, but the time to write the report, drive there, do the inspection, so it's the full cost of that. And then that goes to the second point, the question Councilmember Waterfield just asked, and part of the initial part of this analysis was to make sure that these are the job descriptions that the employees are required to do, and it is the work that either the state or the city council or other regulations require them to do. So we did the time, essentially a time-motion analysis to see what people did, how long it takes them to do the work they're required to do, and then what the cost of that is. So then the question then will be, it costs, this is what it costs, this is what the analysis showed it costs to do the work, and where does the council feel like it's an important value to place that cost? So for the example, for the fire inspections, there's some value for the public to not have buildings burned down, but there's probably more value for the person to not have their building burnt down. So if it costs us $271 to do the work, and they're paying $53 for a permit, is that permit fee too low, and does the council think over time, maybe that should ramp up? Maybe not to the full $271, but to some amount where they're paying more of the cost of what it is. And I think it goes to Eric's point and Ms. Harvey's point, otherwise, that if we're spending taxpayer money on that service, that means we don't have money in the fire department to provide for fire response and emergency response, because that is a general benefit. Anyone can call 911, and we'll go out and we'll help those people.
Let me ask you this on some of those fees, are there duplications? For instance, the state will mandate or require things, we will require things, and maybe the county does. So maybe you have three different agencies looking at this, could one agency do it, the other two agencies then maybe piggyback on that on a report? I don't know, I know that there are duplications, but I don't know to what extent and in what areas.
Yeah, I mean, we have some, the overlap is generally by different types of work, so for inspections, we'll have an inspection to meet our municipal code, then the county has an inspection to make sure it meets health codes, APCD may have an inspection to make sure it meets air quality codes, so they, there tends to be a lot of different inspections, but they tend to have different focuses. Some areas where it might overlap are some of our public safety, where the county provides hazmat, and so we'll coordinate with them for hazmat inspections with our fire department. I think the bigger challenge we see is there's these other agencies, the federal government, the state government, or the county, that requires us doing more work, and we haven't necessarily, we have to pay for doing that more work, and we haven't necessarily passed that cost on to the person, so some of the folks don't necessarily realize that now they have to get a solar panel inspection, or a fire, residential fire inspection, and that costs more money because of that mandate. We've been having the taxpayers fund that part of it, which may not be right as the cost increase.
When there is a remodel on a home, do you have to do a fire inspection on that remodel? If it's just a small remodel?
Yeah.
Okay, if you just remodel a kitchen or-
It depends, because it, I mean, when you say a small remodel, if it requires plumbing, for instance, you may wind up having to do fire sprinklers now.
Or gas lines.
Or gas lines, or a kitchen, so it really depends. The difficulty you have is, again, is that a personal benefit, or is it a general benefit that the taxpayers should pay for?
And that was my next cost, so are the taxpayers paying for that right now, as opposed to the person doing, but isn't the person doing their remodel paying for the permit?
They're not paying for the full cost. Yeah, they pay a permit, and we kind of, you know-
But don't you, but, okay, wait, but the property value goes up, correct?
Yeah, but that-
And so don't we get a benefit off of that personal property, that the whole entire city, they get a benefit off of that?
Yeah.
So-
And that's where it gets to be a balance. I think the one thing we see is, since the council really took a look at this in 2005, there's been new mandates that have come into play that we haven't really adjusted our rates to cover our revenue, our fees, and then there's been costs we've had that have gone up faster than the CPI. And so there's a lot of areas now that might, that maybe are not where the council wants them to be, as far as the amount that the person benefiting from the service is paying for versus what the taxpayers are paying for. But you're right, maybe someone remodeling their kitchen, maybe that's, maybe they shouldn't pay 100%, because there is some benefit for us to, either through property assessment increases, or other, you know, increased value or increased safety that the council might see as a general public benefit to that.
I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud there.
It depends on-
Well, and don't forget that the primary beneficiary of an increased property valuation is the property owner.
I didn't hear.
You're gonna have to talk slower when you talk, because it's sort of coming-
Enunciate better, too.
I was just saying that the primary beneficiary of that improvement to the property value is the property owner.
And as Eric mentioned early, so I mean, we're spending $11 million of tax money for these kinds of services, these 275 or so services, and some of them, we probably should spend tax money on. There's a number of youth programs where we want to have youth active, we want to have them, you know, learn how to swim, or learn how to read, or take advantage of the library, and things like that, but maybe a remodel of a house wouldn't be one where we'd want to have as much of a tax subsidy. And that's where it gets to be both an update of what it costs for us to do, which is the great work Eric did, and then it's gonna be a policy decision of the council of trying to balance what types of fees we do want to subsidize.
So like with ADUs being attached to a home, that's gonna increase the value, but that property owner right now pays for all those permits. It's not subsidized by taxpayers.
Well, they don't pay, they pay for the permits, but the permits don't cost, don't cover the cost of the inspections and the work that the city does. And so someone's paying for it, and so if the permit doesn't pay for it, that means the taxpayers are paying for it, which we just want to make sure that's a choice of the council, and that it doesn't just accidentally happen to be like that.
So basically, instead of paying $100, that might be the cost of something, they would be paying 80 or 70, and the rest will be paid by tax money.
Yeah, and if that's a choice, that's a good choice, but right now on the example I use, they pay $53, it costs 271, and so then the taxpayers are paying 217, so taxpayers are paying four times the amount of the person getting the inspection, and maybe that's okay, maybe not, but the council should decide. And we're not gonna work through, when this, when we go through the process with the workshops and come back to council, we're not gonna ask the council, we're not gonna go through each of the 275 fees, we'll come up with certain categories of, you know, for youth programs, the council wants to subsidize at this amount, for new development or remodels, there's maybe a different amount, and kind of walk it through that way.
And I think we need to also indicate a percentage of how much that cost is going to cost either the individual or the taxpayers. We need to look at the percentage part of that as well, so they can get a good eye view on that. I know that a lot of these things might be shocking to the developers, and so, you know, we, I mean, years ago, we always said that we weren't, you know, gonna do certain things, and especially with the downtown area where we're trying to offer incentives, but then we go in there and throw the permits for the downtown area for cost and stuff, and so it's just, you know, we're speaking out of both sides of our mouths here, so we really need to understand what we're doing there, too.
Yeah, and that's exactly right, it is complicated, and it is important for us to be able to explain this, because, I mean, we hear weekly, I'm sure you do too, people say, hey, it cost me 200 bucks for me to get that work done, so I'm paying 200 bucks, and you look at this analysis, and now it's obvious to see, well, the taxpayers are paying the other 200 bucks for the cost of it. So it's just, you know, important for people to realize, even though they're paying a fee, it's not covering the whole cost of that, and that's by choice of the city council, right? And so it's gonna take some education for people to understand what it really costs to get the work done, and how much they're paying for it, and how much the taxpayers pay for the other part of it.
Eric, were you finished with your presentation?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Questions of council, any other questions?
I have a comment.
Mr. Escudero?
Yeah, well, after seeing all this, you know, when you, my grandma used to say that you always have to take care of your money, but you have to take care more of the money of other people. So when it's about, you know, allocating the resources, I think that we have to be really, really careful, as Ms. City Councilmember Waterfield and also Soto mentioned, we want to incentivize businesses on downtown area, and also, we have to be receiving input from the community, because this is their money. And so I would like to request, as I second the request from Ms. Soto, and having more than one workshop, and after working hours, so we can- So we can get as much input as possible. And invite everybody who's watching us right now to reach out to us, send us emails, contact us. And we need as much input as possible.
Now, we're going to do these workshops virtually, I'm assuming? Okay.
One advantage of the virtual though, it'll make it easier for us to have translation services. So we, we plan to do that as well.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I would like to make one final comment for, for the staff. I just would like to take this time to thank the department heads and their staff that contributed to this study. This was a very in-depth study and it required a significant amount of time on everyone's part. And I want to make a special thank you for Revenue Manager Angie Hernandez. And she took the lead in my office to keep this, this project moving. As I said earlier, we started it over a year ago and then, of course, COVID hit. And, you know, she, she just kept plowing through and we ended up having to do it virtual. We met Eric and, and Chu earlier before COVID had hit. But, so we had to regroup. And so she did a great job and I just wanted to thank her for that. So.
Thank you. Speaking of your, speaking of your department, when are you going to be moving in across the street?
Well, hopefully.
Okay, I'm not going to hold you to it.
Okay, because yeah, you know, there's always some kind of delay. Hopefully by the end of March, we should be in. I know, it takes time.
Yeah, it was, it was January, it was December, then it was January. So I thought it was to be February. Okay.
I know.
It's okay.
We got to get furniture.
Mr. Cordero, did you have a comment?
No, I just wanted to stand up for a minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam, do we have any written comments or requests to speak?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any written communications. And I do show one attendee, Ms. Temora online, and she has raised her hand to speak.
Okay.
And I will, hi Lori.
How you doing? Hi, this is Lori Temora. And thank you very much for informative presentation. What you have before you is a document that provides a lot of facts. It's unfortunate that we didn't have an opportunity to look at this with the general community, the recreation people, the developers, the community at large. But that's going to happen now that you've seen the document. This document missed the point that the guiding principle of the City of Santa Maria 15 years ago was to encourage development and generate new property tax, sales tax, and other benefits for the city. The city council directed that the general fund would help subsidize future development and the application process so that they would not have to carry that burden at the very beginning of a speculative project. So that's, there's nothing in here that talks about how we got here. It talks about 40 and 50 years ago, but not about the City of Santa Maria and the policies and the directions that previous city councils gave to those city managers and those staff as to how they would like to see the community development department operate. So having said that, I wanted to just touch on about four pages. The first one is on page 16 of the staff, of the document. And that page lists 10 items. There's only explanation for the first five in this document. The last items are not identified anywhere in this project or in this document. So the question is, are these fees based on all 10? Or are they just based on the five? And you don't have to answer that tonight and this will be coming up in the presentation. But I know that the city is always very proud about not having any debt. And number 10 says repayment of debt. The next item that I would like to point out is on page 20. This is fully allocated hourly rate components. Most jurisdictions will print, what does it cost for a planner to touch a property or a project for an hour? Is it $100 an hour? Is it $200 an hour? Is it $500 an hour? What is this number that is shown in the pie graph? What is that number? And I'm assuming that if it's 100% cost recovery, you're trying to capture $200 or $300 an hour for everything that that planner does for eight hours a day. And that's a problem that we have with many jurisdictions is that it's very costly to do application process because of those billing rates and the hourly rates that are charged for, to capture full cost recovery. On the page 33, again, this is line item, all of the items that are going to be charged and upgraded to be 100% cost recovery. And I think that they're unreasonable, especially when you're talking about going from $1,000 to $18,000 in one bite. There's just no justification for that. And I do want to point out that on page 34, the one line item that actually seems to be working is building plans and inspections on line item S047. It's actually making money for the city. So the last thing I think the city council should be looking at and not going all the way to the back, but go to pages 50, 51, 52, 53. Basically, what is being proposed here is to capture $1.5 million by raising every fee in the community development departments five to six to 10 times what they're charging right now. And this is not consistent with the city's general plan. It's not consistent with the downtown specific plan. And it's not encouraging concierge service and all of the things that we sold the downtown on by raising these, by even charging some of these fees or what's being proposed. So I think what you have here is facts. Now we got to put the flesh on it and what Santa Maria really means to this community and what previous city councils have directed the community to do in the past. I'll, I'll look forward to the workshops and I'm hoping that we will come to some consensus here that really reflects how the city has operated in the past and not just look at dollar signs. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? Okay. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Any further discussion or direction to staff?
You know, in, in looking at what Lori Temora is talking about back in the past, there, and I wanted to ask for this question. So many things have changed with the new mandates, with new, so many items that come from the county and the state and the state now. It's not doing business as we used to do back then. And that's where I was coming from earlier, that we need to show the percentage of how much we're going to increase it and look at that and maybe we don't, you know, we soften the increase. You know, not just do a 100% increase here and 100% increase there. Because we all know that those mandates have completely changed and it's affecting everybody. You know, from the big developers to mom and pop stores to people that want to remodel their homes and stuff. So maybe we should look at that to see how we can soften the blow to all of it. I understand where she's coming from and I remember the good old days. They were fantastic and, you know, the things were different. And so I wanted to get her perspective. But she can address that when we do the study session as well.
Okay, any other comments or any discussion? What kind of direction do, do we want to give you, I guess? Because we're going to be going into a study session on this and.
Yeah, so I, I think I've, the direction I'm hearing is that we want to have two workshops at a minimum. But we'll, we'll hold if direct to go ahead and do the one that's scheduled for February 23rd. And then we can schedule the second one in the evening hours to, to do that. And then if that's the direction, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
And then after that, once the workshop is complete and we've done those, then that will, hopefully we'll get the direction then from council from those to finalize the policy and then also finalize recommended fees that we can then bring back to council based on that information from those workshops.
And how, how are we getting this information out to the public? Because I know there's going to be a lot of people, there's going to be people who say, I didn't even hear about this. I didn't know what was going on. So.
We will be doing the public noticing that's required. And we can put it out on our website, of course. And then we can, we could do, we could do some other outreach to, to do that.
Okay, I think it'll be helpful and you can say more on the radio show too.
Marco.
I can share it on social media. I can share it on social media if there's like a flyer or something.
Okay. Okay. Just like we do for the, for the general plan. Okay. Any other comments from the council?
Question.
Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, in regards to the time, I, I might be, is it possible to make it a little bit later, that 1:30? Day 23 or that's already? I'm in. Just, okay.
My understanding is that there's two in case some folks can't make it to the 1:31. They can make it to the one in the evening or early evening.
Okay. Next item will be a report by city manager, Mr. Sewell.
Thank you, Mayor and, and council. So the next meeting of the city council is February 16th. And we do have another closed session scheduled, Real Property for that evening. We have the regular business item of the second quarter financial report. And we anticipate having a COVID update. There's been a lot going on with the vaccinations. And we have invited Sue Anderson from Marion. And then we can provide you an update of what the city is doing with COVID response and, and our current statistics. And that's for February 16th and concludes my report.
Thank you. So let's go to oral reports of council members. Mr. Cordero, start with you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. The only really thing, real thing I have to report is that at the United Way, we have been holding several meetings with regard to the anticipation of there being a rodeo. And our concern, our involvement is with the, our Elks Queen candidate. So we're holding a lot of meetings with that and, and getting our candidate set for the contest. But other than that, I haven't attended any other meetings. Thank you. Well, according to, no, no one knows for sure. But according to Tina, there's going to be something, even if it is just rounding up the local people like the Branquinos and Patinos and the people that have been rodeo experience to do something. And it's been essentially pushed back to probably August or September. There will not be one in June. That's been scratched.
Very good. Ms. Soto?
The only reportable, well, it's not reportable, but I'll just report on it. I hosted Cocktails with a Council Member last Thursday and my guest speaker was Chief Schneider. Shout out to him if he's watching. Thank you for being such a trooper and hopping on the call and answering questions. And then I also want to give a shout out to the folks at Marion. I know city manager Sewell was just talking about the flu vaccine, I mean, the COVID vaccines. And my grandmother just got her vaccine at Marion and she just said that everybody there was just so lovely and it was just a really easy process. And so I just really want to give them a shout out and all of our staff, if we had public safety folks there, like police and fire there, just a big thank you. And the same goes to Hancock because I got my COVID vaccine, my first one at Hancock. And so shout out to Kevin Wathers and everybody at Hancock who made that happen. So that was all.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, Madam Mayor, on January 14th, I attended the San Barbara LACCO meeting. And they named me chairperson for the year. Lots of stuff they wanted to do. On Decore, I did the Ben Hayes Show. I also attended CPWA California Center Coast Water Board meeting. Also attended the next state statewide project contract. Appointment of the members of the council and county supervisors.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So these last two weeks have been pretty busy. I'm really happy I was able to attend the 2021 New Mayors and City Council Members Academy. It's a virtual conference by the League of City, California Cities. It was incredible. It was the 21, 22, 28, and 29. Great speakers, great information. They did a pretty good job. I've been learning a lot. And also I would say part of the homelessness roundtable on January 27th. Also some interesting information in regards how to address this growing issue here in the whole state, California. And also, I, I attended the League of California Cities Latino Caucus on the 28th. It was also really interesting to see this growing interest on the Latino community to be part of city council, mayors. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much how I kept myself busy these two weeks. And also would like to bring something I was sharing with, with the city manager in regards, last, last city council meeting, we had a public comments that were Spanish. So people were, and I was, I was able to translate, to interpret a little bit of what they were saying. And I'm really happy with that. I'm, I used to do that here in the city council a couple of years ago. However, I think, and I was looking also at the, these Samurai joining the district meetings and they're translating Spanish and Mexecco. So I would like to bring this need for us to have a translation, at least in Spanish, for the whole meeting. Because there were some, I was contacted afterwards that meeting because they say Carlos, what did they end up saying? You know, so they disconnect. Once they spoke, disconnect, most of the people because they were saying, we didn't understand what, what the city council was saying. So there's a big need for, to be more open to, to that. So I would like to bring that need. I think that's a need here in Santa Maria. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo, I do want to say thank you for bringing that up. I know that maybe this is a good time before budgets. So you have support, a second on that.
It's not.
I know.
It's not an action.
I, I, it can be tables. So that hopefully can be brought forward to an agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Soto.
So January 20th, I did the RCAHT, the Protect and Prevent the Human Trafficking Prevention Discussion Virtual. The South Coast Youth Safety Partnership Quarterly Meeting Virtual. January 21st, I attended SBCA monthly board meeting. And that's the only meeting we do in person. And the APCD board meeting in person. And then later that day, the county legislative briefing virtual. January 22nd, Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Board Meeting. And the 23rd, Livable California Meeting, again, discussing housing. January 26th, Hearing on Southern California Edison's 2020 Public Safety Power Shut-Off Practices. On the 27th, did a homelessness roundtable with California Cities and did the Marion Foundation Board of Directors. January 28th, I spoke at the Thursday Breakfast Rotary and that starts at 7:15 in the morning. The Broadband Consortium Pacific Coast with Econ Alliance. And did a, I, I put on to see the news broadcast because they were talking about high school sports and lockdowns and how it has been so detrimental to the kids. And it just never came on. So I don't know if any of you saw that. First, I attended the CADCA National Leadership Forum. That's what's going on this week, a conference with CADCA. Did the Ben Hayes Show this morning. And see, Thursday, the 20th, I guess 20th was Thursday. I went to Marion and got my vaccination and that went so slow. my vaccination, and that went so slick, probably in and out in 20 minutes, 25 minutes. And, you know what I think was really neat, is, is that they had clipboards, they didn't have laptops there, they had clipboards, so they could go around helping people get registered, and so they could sign their name. It was, I think, just your name and your date of birth, and then you got right in line, and there was, and then someone waved you on, you, you came in and you got your vaccination, you went and sat down for 15 minutes. And a great shout out to our firefighters, because they were there. And, and it was really interesting, one firefighter came up to my husband and I and said, do you folks live here? So I thought that was interesting. And, and it was just, it was like, it was so jovial, you know, and people were so happy to be there. If they had had music, it would have been like a wedding reception. I think people, this was a social event of the, of the year for a lot of these people. People were happy to be there.
Other people live.
Yes. Yes. And so anyway, Sue Anderson was there, and sort of like part of the welcoming committee. So Marion, job well done, very well done. Did, okay, and it didn't hurt, because I am such a, I'm such a wimp, so it didn't hurt. But anyway, any, any other thing from the, from the council? Here, oh, yes, we are going to, thank you, Mr. Watson, for reminding me, we are going to adjourn now into closed session.